Good to have you back.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
How are you doing?
Good, how are you? You don't like to bring your honor. Kind of bring my mug.
You're bad. I was like, I could kick her in the stern.
No, I'm not hard at work here, actually.
Do either of you have a conflict interest?
That was good, too.
Definitely no. And so without further ado, give an opinion. That's always your decision, but I pulled two ethics opinions that both address the subject. In both cases, they're saying the person does have a conflict interest, but they also reference these cases. The key difference here is when the city, any government body appoints you to a board, you are not the board member, the city member. You are representative of the city. So the city superior holds your seats. We can replace you, we can appoint other people, the council can yank you at any time. The city holds that seat, determines representational. The difference, remember when Lindsey Grassman was on D.C., just when she was elected, she does not have protection. She would have conflict interest because she was elected as a member by that other process. The city points, by whatever means that the town or the city, you represent. Yep, in both of your cases. In both of your cases, the council will replace you with somebody else at any time. I doubt it's coming up, but it's.
And I looked at it kind of a way of like, take this out of the, like, if it was on Parks and Rec. If that was the case, I couldn't vote on anything on Parks and Rec.
Yeah, and only, these are slightly more hairy cases. It becomes a bigger decision where organizations are. Every once in a while, there are actual for-profit corporate bodies. It becomes murky with like insurance companies, so like the leading municipalities. Not for profit per se, but like Sid Mick, that really kind of, it can be. So sometimes municipalities are given board seats and that gets murkier. That's why they kind of address this. But there's clear language in there, you'll see it. I just start reading, you'll see it real quick.
Yeah, alright, thanks. I had to get you my two hundred. Cincinnati was a mixed band. There was some really cool stuff, but some other stuff, and I was like, eh. Yeah, it started with last week. Yeah. 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 Sure. You can close my mouth. Close it up now. Okay. The ones I gave charging. Oh, yeah, I will. And I'll forget by the time I'm home. Oh, sure. That was interesting. It was kind of punishing.
But it's kind of forcing. And it seemed to me, you know, the trains were coming, which is really odd compared to why I remember DC. Sometimes it seemed like you were waiting forever. And these are just.
I don't really close.
Our version of that chat, what did they call there?
Yeah, yeah. Something similar to that. I don't know, you've been here for a while. Come on, man. Let's just hope Mike doesn't have another coffee spell. Has to excuse himself.
I had enough of that. Yeah. He's definitely not a politician. My wife liked it.
That was very accurate.
Yeah, whatever it was, we had something.
No, I didn't go to the city voice thing, but I was like feverish. Right. It was all for sale. I don't care. There was a building. There was a building. Who built this in the period? It's kind of a silly. Yes, you're now aware of this infrastructure and transportation. Oh, no.
Good evening, everyone. It is six thirty P.M., so I will call the Tuesday, May twenty first, twenty twenty four meeting of the Superior Common Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor LeDene, Counselor Van Sickle, Counselor Moffett.
Here.
Counselor Sweeney is absent. Counselor Fennessy. Counselor Elm. Vice President Ludwig. Counselor Herrick. Counselor Johnson and President Grasky is absent.
Just confirm that Counselor Grasky is not online. Okay. We have a quorum.
Item four point one is the approval of the May seventh, twenty twenty four regular council meeting minutes.
Motion is by Counselor Herrick, second by Counselor Johnson, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item six point one is report from Mayor Payne.
I don't have much to report, counselors, except upcoming meeting. I have just scheduled a State of the City speech, which will be May Thursday, May thirtieth, which is next week. It's going to be a little bit more abbreviated fare because I'd like to do something a little bit different and schedule a committee of the whole meeting that same day. No obligation, most of you have been very kind to attend the State of the City in the past anyways. Theater projects will be in town and wanted to have more of the discussion that we had had with them the last time they were here. Fortunately, as you remember, that was in the middle of a council meeting and it's tough to fit a true, full, open discussion under those circumstances. So that will be the priority. I'm going to call that, it is optional, but I'll call that committee of the whole meeting for five thirty P.M. next Thursday. If you'd like to talk about theater projects, we will make, we will notice this, but we will not be casting any votes or making any formal decisions. We'll try to lead an informed discussion that that gives them some clear direction. And following that, I will give, I promise, an abbreviated State of the City. I mostly want to make sure I do it, I think there's some exciting things for us to highlight, set a little bit of an agenda for the next year. But I won't, mostly want to continue the tradition of naming a citizen of the year. I really enjoy that and I think I've got somebody pretty great to recognize this year. So if you want to learn who that is, Thursday at, well, State of the City is at seven, but I encourage joining us at five thirty at Douglas County Historical Society. They have, we will use their exhibit space and keep trying to change that every year. That's, that's all I have, except I have one appointment tonight. As most of you know, I was out of town the last week and so struggle, I do have a couple more to clean up. I'll probably be cleaning up for the next couple of weeks, but I will, if I really struggle, I'll reach out to the council for any of these appointments. But for now, unless there are questions, move forward with the appointment.
All right, to the Mayor's Commission on Disabilities, appoint Shawna Anderson for a three-year term expiring May twenty twenty seven.
Motion is by Counselor Fennessy, second by Counselor Elm, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. I also just want to remind, is that a full commission on disabilities? Okay, so that commission will now be able to meet and do its work. In the future, though, we've always tried to keep that about fifty percent people that identify as having a disability. That's not a formal rule that we need to follow, and so I'm definitely willing to consider professional advocates as well. We're just looking for people that can be a powerful voice, and so I hope for that commission to be much more active than it's been the last year. Through no fault of their own, we have struggled to fill the appointments, but we're full now, so thank you.
Item seven point two is the business of the Public Works Committee with a meeting held on May second. Is there a report from the chair?
Thank you, clerk. Yeah, briefly. So the first item that we considered was adding some traffic control up in North End for two reasons. One, we've had considerable concerns in that area from head start and speed. And the second is due to a change in the better bus blueprint. After the bus routes were changed last year, this year, they moved the stop up by one block and saw an eighty-four percent increase in their ridership just by making that one change. So that's the first item for consideration. The second, we mentioned last month, there was a contract with Superior Flying Services after the longtime management of Bill and Morty. So as a reminder, we own the airport and we are contracting those services out to Superior Flying Services, which is a longtime lessee of those facilities. And the carbon reduction regarding the L.E.D. lights will result in a substantial drop in our utility bills for the, the street lighting there. And Kelvin is better than best practice regarding dark skies. Happy to, and I just also want to say just a huge thank you to the folks over at E.S.D. and Counselor Ludwig, who has been working really hard behind the scenes over months to get the composting program up and running. That takes an extraordinary amount of work and coordination, so just congratulations to Counselor Ludwig. And again, a big thanks to the folks over at E.S.D. for making that happen. That said, I would make a motion to approve the, the recommendations from the Public Works Committee, items one, two, three, four, five, and six.
Actually, if the counselor does not object, we all accept your motion for items three through six. We have to read the ordinances. So the mo-
Three through six.
The motion then is to approve recommendations three through six of the Public Works Committee.
Oh, I see, I see, okay. My motion is to approve items three, four, five, and six, and I'll defer to the clerk to read the ordinances, one and two.
Is there a second to the motion? Motion is by Counselor Van Sickle, second by Counselor Ludwig, to approve five recommendations of the Public Works Committee listed as items three, four, five, and six on your agenda. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving all of those recommendations, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. And if the clerk will read the ordinances.
The first recommendation is to approve an ordinance amending city code, chapter one twelve, traffic code, article seven, parking, schedule A, stops, section three, one, and two-way stops to add North Sixth Street. The following stop at Coming Avenue, Baxter Avenue, Weeks Avenue, and Fisher Avenue.
Motion is by Counselor Ludwig, second by Counselor LeDene, Counselor Van Sickle.
Sorry, Chair, just, just a note to the minutes, and I will grab this in the next Public Works meeting in the minutes. It says, recommendation to approve five-year contract with Superior Flying Services LLC for the airport management at the, oh, sorry.
The question is on adoption of the ordinance, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
The second recommendation is to approve an ordinance amending city code, chapter one twelve, traffic code, article seven, parking, schedule A, stop signs, one, four-way stops to add Klow Avenue and North Sixth Street.
Motion is by Counselor Ludwig, second by Counselor Fennessy, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. And Counselor Van Sickle, is there, is there an issue with this item, the contract with the airport? Okay, thank you. We are on to finance.
Item seven point three is the business of the Finance Committee with a meeting held on May ninth. Is there a report?
Counselor Herrick, please.
Yes, thank you. Couple of things we talked about, one of them was the landfill fees for the Parkland trailer parks. And we were looking at the Douglas County fee waiver request. Another item was the Barker's Island Marina, their twenty twenty-three financial statements. It is said that they are doing well and there have been some price increases, again, due to inflation. But everything looks promising there and there is some room, so if somebody wants to go ahead and put their boat there, there is, there are some slips available. Also, we talked about the tax increment financing budgets and appropriations and revolving grant fund budget. And those were approved in our meeting. And then the last thing we talked about was Superior Public Museums Memorandum of Understanding Review. Right now, there seems to be a lot of confusion of what's really going on there, so I'd like to make, I'd like to recommend postponing that for two weeks to our next council meeting. Other than that, that's, that's all I have there, so we're looking at recommendations. The first one is, unless anybody has comments, to approve the Douglas County request to waive landfill fees for the Parkland trailer parks demolition project.
So Counselor, if you don't object, we'll take these one at a time.
Sure.
And then in, that we will have some public comment on item number four, on the memorandum of understanding. But I'll, I'll recognize you with privilege once that is concluded. But in terms of the first item, counselors, the waiver of the landfill fees, I'm going to request no action on that tonight. Not a referral, postpone, simply no action. And the reason is this is a little bit more complicated than it seems, not much more complicated than it seems. This is the second of two requests I have, I recommended to the Finance Committee both times and continue to recommend that the city waive these fees. There was considerable discussion about it. It's something of a complex issue based on how the county came to demolish and dispose of a trailer park in Parkland. It's been a long process and I, I want to make sure that we're totally clear about what we're doing. We're not actually waiving it tonight. That's, that was not the recommendation of the Finance Committee. They wanted to consider both invoices for both dumpings, I guess, into the landfill. But there was some discussion about how that would relate to the sale. That's as complicated as I want to make it tonight. What we decided, the Finance Department will be bringing those invoices, nobody's actually seen those invoices yet. Will be bringing those invoices directly to the Finance Committee for a final recommendation of them. So this is my mistake, this probably should not have moved forward to council, it was supposed to stay in Finance Committee. So I am asking no action, and then we will continue this conversation in the Finance Committee when we have invoices. It's just simpler than referring whole, we can start it as a new conversation. So unless somebody is insistent on waiving all these fees tonight, which I don't recommend right now, I'm going to proceed. Then we can proceed to item number two.
The second is to approve the twenty twenty-four tax increment budget.
Motion to approve.
Motion is by Counselor Herrick, second by Counselor Fennessy. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Three is to approve the twenty twenty-four revolving grant fund budget.
Motion to approve.
Motion is by Counselor Herrick, second by Counselor Ludwig. Reminder, counselors, my goals, long-term goals, get all budgets approved at one time. This one's a little bit of a, we, we still have a bunch of stragglers, but this is also one of our newest budgets. So any questions or discussion? Counselor Herrick, your light is still on, you don't have a question on this, right? Okay. All those in favor of adopting the revolving grant fund budget, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
And the fourth is the termination of the Superior Public Museums Memorandum of Understanding.
We have several folks signed up for public comment. If folks are here and would like to speak in public comment, you, I, I will call for folks to come up to the microphone afterwards, even if you are not signed up. I just want to clarify, it is notice of intent to terminate the memorandum of understanding. The city cannot terminate an M.O.U. tonight. So in terms of public comment, I'll call the first person up in just a moment. You have three minutes, each person has three minutes and three minutes exactly. That requirement is strictly enforced. I will warn speakers when they have thirty seconds remaining. The council does have the ability to extend the time. When we have multiple speakers, the council typically does not extend the time, but that, that requires, I'll double check what vote that requires. So unless there are questions, I will open public comment. The first person is Brian Finstead.
Hello, my name is Brian Finstead. I guess what I wanted to speak to isn't directly related to the M.O.U., but the two are sort of closely intertwined. The Douglas County Historical Society approached the city and basically asked if they would entertain the idea of doing a consolidation of our museums and their museums. And I just kind of wanted to dispel some, some ideas that are out there, that there is something that's a takeover or something nefarious or, or that people were left out. The Douglas County Historical Society owns its museum and owns its collection. And we first met with the city, sort of an owner-to-owner conversation, would you even entertain, you know, such an idea? And so that was actually sort of our board leadership, the mayor, Brent as the Superior Public Museum's city rep and Garner as the D.C.H.S. city rep. And, and it was just sort of a, is, is there a possibility here? And when that was a yes, we wanted to meet with Superior Public Museums as soon as possible. In fact, Brent went and spoke to them, sort of give them a heads up of what went on, and we had that meeting together within a week. And so there, there wasn't this big left out that's being said, there isn't this huge takeover that's, that's being said. And, and what that looks like, we don't know yet. We haven't even had our first meeting between our boards. And I'm just hearing all kinds of things rippling through the community, sort of disparaging many people, including the Douglas County Historical Society. So I just wanted to, I guess, share that we have shared challenges and we can see how some of those shared challenges can be met working together instead of separate. So that's all I want to do, I just wanted to set the tone with that.
Thank you, next is Kristen Hokes.
Hi, thank you. My name is Kristen Hokes and I am the treasurer and the board of directors at Douglas County Historical Society. And just to piggyback on what Brian was talking about as to some of the misinformation maybe that's been portrayed about Douglas County Historical Society, I can't speak to from about twenty twenty-one back because I just joined the board during COVID. So I will tell you that there has been a, a statement put out on social media that we operate losing money every year, and I wanted to just say that we have gone through some pretty transformative changes, both on our board of directors and with how we operate our business. We're working really hard to be able to sustain ourselves. We're not working hard to stockpile money per se, but I can report unaudited for this last year, when the financial statements become public, that we'll have an eighty-eight thousand dollar net profit before depreciation and gains. So that's a good news story. The other thing I wanted to share is part of that is because we've worked really hard to fundraise in this last year. And if you put the- And if you put the city grant aside that we normally get and the county grant aside that we normally get, we've raised eighty three thousand dollars through our events and fundraising efforts. So I just wanted to straighten out the record on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Erin Hicks.
Hi. I'm Erin Hicks. I'm the Vice President of the Douglas County Historical Society Board. And I think, as Kristin and Brian have said, I'd like to sort of piggyback off what they'd said, what they've said, but I'd like to address sort of like what we see as the future. So our board for the last year I've been a part of is a volunteer, very hardworking board. And those who've sort of worked on the board before I arrived made it a goal to grow the board, to grow the organization. And so in this last year or two, we've developed a mission, and I just want to read that for everyone here today. The mission of the Douglas County Historical Society is preserving the history of Douglas County and sharing our stories. This year, we've also developed a vision, and that is to be the premier sustainable local history public resource. We see ourselves as stewards of the objects that we hold in the public trust. So we've developed goals to explore partnership opportunities, develop and implement a strategic plan, develop and implement a fund development plan, optimize the collection to best serve our community, and enhance community perception and history education opportunities. So we take those mission, vision, and goals very seriously. And one of the things that we also worked to do was to recognize that for two organizations who used to be one, that maybe this was an opportune time during leadership changes or staff changes, that we would be remiss in missing an opportunity to point out this could be an opportune time to unify organizations for both of their benefit, if not also for the city's benefit as well. So what we came to, I think, the table with a proposal was to do just that. Explore the possibilities and the potentials of how both of our organizations could improve, benefit, use the strengths and weaknesses, or the strengths of the other organization to kind of cover the weaknesses maybe that each of us might have. So I think I'd just like to underscore, too, that our board's committed to working towards that mission, vision, and our goals sort of regardless, and that's just what we take very seriously. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Caitlin Bowman.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Payne and Councilor members, for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Caitlin Bowman, and I'm Board President of Superior Public Museums. S P M has demonstrated financial responsibility, strong management, and positive engagement with the city over the past twenty years. This can be seen by our financial records and fiscal responsibility, robust community engagement in events, site maintenance and enhancement, proactive communication and outreach with the city, and the strong partnership between our board and staff to manage these sites. Related to tonight's agenda item, there are currently two specific issues being discussed interchangeably. Superior Public Museum's current memorandum of understanding with the City of Superior and a potential merger with Douglas County Historical Society. We've come to understand through additional conversations that S P M's M O U with the city and any negotiations regarding a contract to continue the management of the three sites are not contingent upon a merger with D C H S. We would advocate and recommend that the city not dissolve S P M's M O U at this time, and together, the city and S P M begin active negotiations on a new contract during these summer months. Then, once a one-to-three-year contract has been reached, we would advocate for the M O U being dissolved and the contract beginning. We are in agreement that a stronger contract with increased communication and collaboration between the city and S P M has strong benefits for all parties. We are open to discussions about what this increased communication and collaboration would look like, and feel that this would meet the city's and S P M's goals and needs. During the following contracted year, S P M is committed to engaging in active conversations with D C H S surrounding a potential merger. These merger conversations are exciting, and S P M has expressed positive interest in collab, increased collaboration with D C H S and discussing a merger. We continue to express that we aim to be an equal and active partner with D C H S in these conversations. We hope that the information outlined within our letter to Mayor Payne and to the council and my brief remarks tonight will give you a clearer understanding of Superior Public Museums and assist in your discussion regarding this agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the council? If not, I will recognize Counselor Herrick again.
Thank you. Yeah, this time I would like to, for item four, I'd like to recommend to postpone that for two weeks to the next council meeting, so that full council will be here also for discussion.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Herrick, second by Counselor Van Sickle. I want to specify that would be to the next regular city council meeting.
That's correct.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion to postpone. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to postpone until the next regular city council meeting, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item seven point five is the business of the Public Safety Committee with a meeting held on May sixteenth. Is there a report from the chair?
Yes, there is. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Just speak briefly to the two action items that you've seen. The first one you see is a change of the scope of the contract agreement that we have with O P N. O P N was originally hired to look at the renovations for Fire Station Three. We had set aside a million dollars in in renovations for that. The two estimates have come in much higher than anticipated, to where Chief Volbrecht asked for a change of scope of this agreement to include brand-new fire stations, find out exact prices of the renovations versus absolutely brand-new. And then council can decide exactly what we want to do from there, based on that. The second one you see is to waive bidding for the purchase of vehicles for the Superior Fire Department, Police Department. These vehicles, the order for for these vehicles were put in about two years ago with the state. Ford is not fulfilling, these vehicle requests right now are not at the rate that we are can expect to see any anytime soon. Chief Winterscheid reached out to some local dealerships, found found exactly what his police department was needing through Carried Toyota, and is requesting a waiving of bidding so the police department can get these vehicles that they've been waiting about two years for. So if there's any questions, I will gladly answer. If not, I would motion to approve both items.
Motion by Counselor Dean, second by Counselor Fennessey. I just want to say, Counselors, the the leadership of the Fire Department has been pretty stressed about the process of upgrading these buildings, and, you know, we're learning a lot as we go, and just to make them feel better, I want to say out here right in public, it's, I'm I'm fairly committed to doing this right. In fact, I'd like to do it even better than than they're suggesting. I think I'm as stressed as they are about how we're going to pay for two entirely new fire halls, but I feel pretty confident that we'll be able to figure this out. And one of the missions that I've given Fire Command is how do we expand beyond the concept of just a fire hall? Can we have more combined public safety building? Maybe expand, we we don't know what the future needs of the police department will be, for example, but we know they will have future needs, particularly around increased use of technology, probably more space. And I've asked them to recognize that fire halls, especially Stations Two and Three, are neighborhood fire halls. They exist just nestled right into communities within Superior. And I don't know what I'm asking for quite yet, but I think there's an opportunity to make them serve the neighborhood better. I find it absolutely charming that one of our fire stations has a playground attached to it, for example. And so some of the ideas we're talking about are, you know, if we were to add outdoor fitness facilities for firefighters, let's make them so the public can use them, too. Everybody gets more fit climbing a ladder. But so that's going to be a very large discussion looming over the budget. I just wanted everybody to hear that I'm committed to doing both fire stations. Again, don't know how we're doing it yet, but it's it's going to be fairly important and a and a large expense. Are there any questions on either of these? Then the motion is to approve both recommendations. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. I'm sorry, Chief, do you want to say something? Okay. There were no questions, unless there is more discussion. All those in favor of approving both recommendations, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
All right. Moving on to reports without recommendations. At this time, are there any further committee or commission reports to be made?
Seeing none, we can move to new business.
Item ten point one, I am recommending approval of miscellaneous licenses.
Motion is by Counselor Fennessey, second by Counselor Herrick. Counselor Johnson made the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item ten point two, I'm recommending approval of a temporary Class B beer license application for the commemorative Air Force Lake Superior Squadron located at forty-eight oh four Hammond Avenue for the Richard I Bong Airport Open House event to be held on June eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion is by Counselor Dean, second by Counselor Elm. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item ten point three, Public Works Director Janigo is recommending approval of an ordinance amending city code chapter one twelve, traffic code, schedule J, accessible parking zones, remove accessible parking sign at thirteen twenty Baxter Avenue on both sides.
Motion is by Counselor Elm, second by Counselor Ludwig. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item ten point four, Community Development Manager Anderson recommends approval of a resolution to set a public hearing to amend the 2024 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan.
Motion is by Counselor Herrick, second by Counselor Johnson. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item ten point five, Environmental Services Director Roberts is recommending the purchase of building and land located at twenty-one ten, twenty-one twelve Hammond Avenue in the amount of twenty-one, excuse me, two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars.
So Counselors, this this did not go to any committee because it was relatively timely. I supported it moving directly to council. It is the purchase of a house, and it is something of a seller's market right now. And so it was relatively urgent, and the month and a half, it typically takes something to even to go even quickly through committee, I thought, could miss this opportunity. I want to say I joined Director Roberts and Director Janigo in recommending this purchase. They are both online. If you have questions, the the short version is they they've wanted this property for some time now. There is a an active service entrance to the sewer directly beneath it. I don't know whose idea it was to build a house on that, but they did. I want to also say, I I've expressed my intent to them, and I'll express it to you now. Purchasing this house does not mean we're automatically removing it. It just means we'll have the option to access that in the future at some point. So but I I don't want somebody living in that when we suddenly need to, I don't want somebody else owning that if we were to need to condemn that property, and that is very possible in the future. So this is also somebody's house that they're selling, and I thought, call me crazy, I just thought it was, we should offer them the asking price. We prob, it's only fair, they didn't, I don't think they knew about this, but I hope I didn't butcher that explanation. Are there questions? Unless there are questions, I should get a motion on the floor before discussion.
Motion to approve?
Motion is by Counselor Moffett, second by Counselor Van Sickle. Counselor Moffett.
I just want to voice support for this and say that as we look at housing options in the city and the city participating in affordable housing programs, even if we were looking at constructing a home for affordable housing or something like that, the city could never build a house for two hundred and thirteen thousand in this market. And so, you know, even if the intent ended up being, this ended up on a different lot as an affordable home or something, I think it's a really smart investment.
That will be the goal. We'll try to move it. Any further discussion? Counselor Herrick.
Yeah, is there, there is currently renters in there, is that correct? And
I don't know that. Director Janigo, Director Roberts, is this occupied?
Yes, there's a duplex, and there is a tenants on both sides currently.
Okay. Will they have the option of staying there for a while, or would they, are you recommending that they move somewhere else?
Always. We will, they will be staying at least in the extended short term. I don't mean to step on his toes. That is a standard policy when we acquire housing. Even where we have condemned housing, we really go out of our way to keep people in their housing. In the event we did have to displace somebody, the city is going to be, is going to offer pretty extensive support in helping them find a place. This this house has covered this utility access for a hundred years, so there's no hurry to get anybody out of there. Most likely, we're going to try and move it. No hurry to do that either. We just want the access. So so nobody will be displaced. There's a good chance we move somebody else in there.
All right. Thanks.
Not promising that either. Counselor Elm.
If the house is moved, what what's going to be there afterwards?
Then we would probably keep access to the property.
Some green space or something?
Yeah, and you can, if you find this house on, you know, Google Earth or something, or drive by it on Hammond, it's actually a pretty tight little lot, and it's it's really wedged in between two houses. I personally love that look. It makes for a nice shady little street, but imagine the folks living there are fairly cramped, and it's it's they're, these houses, the three of them in a row, much smaller lot size than all of their neighbors on Hammond. So if it's removed, that would make the two neighbors have a much more typical lot size for the neighborhood.
Sure.
Any further, oh, Counselor Fennessey.
Are there any others like this in the city? This is the first I've heard of anything like this.
Not that I know of. Director Roberts?
There, this is the most significant one. It's the one that's been on our radar the longest. I think there are a few others, probably less than, less than a dozen across the whole city.
And so what would, what would prevent us just from moving that that access point to somewhere, somewhere else?
So in this case, the the pipe that runs underneath it is a sixty-inch brick sewer, and it's a rerouting it, it doesn't have enough slope to do that and meet minimum slopes, so it kind of has to be where it is, or it wouldn't have a smooth flow through the system. And so there's not a lot of real good options for trying to reroute it.
Right. Thank you. And I explained that poorly. I described it as an access point, when in reality, it's the sewer, and most sewers exist in public right-of-way. This is under somebody's house. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the purchase, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item ten point six, Finance Director Reinhardt is recommending approval of a resolution and certificate of incumbency authorizing the City of Superior to enter into a lease purchase agreement with P N C Equipment Finance LLC to purchase, acquire, and lease certain property in the amount of two hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Motion is by Counselor Dean, second by Counselor Johnson. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. I'm aware of no other business, any business by the public, announcements from counselors? Not, we have no further business and are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.